Alright, good morning everybody.
Morning.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today, and Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to convene once again. Our God, we thank you for all those in attendance. We thank you for this great opportunity, Father, and this great privilege to serve. We ask that you would touch us all, Father, that we may function in the spirit of excellence, Father God, with the wisdom that is called of each of us this day, Father God. Through it all, we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. In Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September 27th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 23rd through the 29th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
Is Susan Shipman here?
Today?
Oh, you can go. Come on up, Susan.
Everybody's coming to dance.
She went to present that day.
I'm just teasing. Okay.
Whereas let it be known that the City of Gadsden, Alabama acknowledges the prevalence of domestic violence in this city and in all of its districts. Domestic violence is a crime that will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law in the City of Gadsden. The city does assist victims of domestic violence by supporting second chance through promoting its shelter, its outreach, court advocacy, transitional housing, educational, and prevention programs. Second Chance is recognized for its work in providing safe shelter and supportive services for domestic violence victims fleeing abusive situations in Gadsden, Alabama. Whereas the City of Gadsden resolves to reduce the incidence of domestic violence by promoting awareness of the issue and availability of safe shelter and services provided by second chance. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gattan, the Mayor of the City of Gadsden hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to be observed and promoted throughout the City of Gadsden.
Would you like to say? We certainly like to thank the City of Gadsden for this proclamation and the opportunity to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We hope it will be an opportunity for the citizens of Gadsden to become more aware of the, across all socioeconomic levels, problem that exists in our society. And so, we thank you for the proclamation and thank you for your involvement and interest.
Alright, thank you Mayor, thank you Mr. Andrews for all the work that you do regarding awareness of this very critical issue in our communities. We definitely appreciate that. Item number 8A on the agenda under Unfinished Business is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1309 Perry Street. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The city acquired this property in lieu of nuisance abatement proceedings. David and Mona Butler have offered to purchase it for $300. What is the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna move to adopt.
So we have a motion to adopt this resolution and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items number 8B and C are resolutions ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1420A and B Forest Avenue in District 3. Keith G. Peters, Timothy D. Sprayberry, and Exchange Bank of Alabama being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on August 30th. What is the pleasure of the council?
On our recommendation of Brian Harbison of the Building Department, we're gonna ask for another 30-day table.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolutions for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table both resolutions for 30 days.
Item number 8D is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property at 625 Spring Street in District 3, the State of Alabama, and heirs of Lily Mae Hollis, heirs being Beverly Hollis Parker, Alfred T. Hollis, Marfleta Hollis Exford, and Juana Letta Hollis Benson being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 10 days on September 20th. What is the pleasure of the council?
We not only tabled, Mr. President, for 10 days, we also tabled it for 60 days and they still did not complete any work on the properties. So in lieu of that, I'm gonna ask that we make a motion to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1563 Litchfield Avenue in District 1. Tuscaloosa LLC and Mutual Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in January of this year. There's been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate.
Okay, is there any discussion? Brian, there was some discussion about whether or not this was rehabable. Is there something that we're not seeing with the pictures?
We looked at all of them and based on the tax appraisal from last year.
Here are the four things you need to know about quarantine.
I may need you to repeat that last part.
Man, I'm checking on Myrtle Beach.
I'm sorry, it sounded like my voice changed there. You know, we look at every case and once we get a resolution, we base the maximum that we can put into a rehab based on the, usually based on 20% of last year's tax appraised value of the property. If it's something we feel like where we can save a house, we'll certainly do it.
Okay, alright, thanks.
That's real estate speak, for I know you think you know what I said, but what you heard is not what I meant.
Alright, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1306 Stillman Avenue in District 2, the State of Alabama, possible rights of redemption of Evian Lapsley Dudley, American General Financial Services, and Tanya D. Locke being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of this year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 603 Cowell Street in District 3, Bessie Scott, Lois Scott, and the State of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of 2013. There've been no improvements other than boarding up of the house. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I got a question. I got a question, Lee. When we passed the ordinance to abate these houses, like one or two of those, you know, like Brian was saying, they look at them about rehabbing. Can we go ahead, I mean like could we advertise on 99 just like it is, what we'd take, or do anything like that as far as getting rid of it without doing the rehab ourselves? Cause there's a lot of people who will buy one, fix it up, and try to reset it or rein it.
No.
I didn't know you was a bureaucrat. So we don't have titles till we abate it and get a lien and foreclothes, right?
You're right, correct.
Oh, gosh.
I knew that was too easy. I just wanted to make sure.
Alright. That's a tough one to follow. Clerk?
It felt like a divorce law you had.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I spoke with the owner phone and she asked for 60 days. Actually, she asked for 90 days, but I told her I'd give her 60 days. So I'm gonna ask that we give 60 days to table, please.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 60 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 60 days.
Item number 12 is a rescinding resolution R-215-16 regarding nuisances at 1014 Valley Joe Avenue. After a public hearing on March 29th, 2016, a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on this property was tabled for 60 days. Due to a clerical error, the resolution appeared on the agenda on May 24th and was adopted prematurely. This rescinds the resolution and a new public hearing will be the next item on today's agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1014 Valley Joe Avenue in District 3, Sammy Lee Rutledge and Willie Howard Rutledge being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April 2015. There was a building permit taken out in April 2015. No work has been performed under that permit. Been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Brian, how much additional time will the property owner net as a result of the reissuance of this, reconsideration of this resolution?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How much additional time will the property owner net after us reconsidering this resolution? Will they get any additional time, or?
No.
Okay.
No, this- We gave him 60 days at one point, and he's still haven't completed any work on the house, correct?
Right, there were a couple of additions years ago. Our case actually started after these two additions were started. And as you can tell in pictures, the additions weren't properly secured and pretty much what's there is rotted down, so. But, I mean, the property owner, to answer your question, based on the additional action we took today, has received, you know, I'd say 90 days in addition to what they originally received. This case started over a year ago, so.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody told me that that guy sold that house or something, don't they?
I don't know anything about that. Only thing I know, he came up here and at the last hearing that we had, public hearing on it, and I gave him 60 days, and he still hasn't completed any work on it, so. If he sold it, that would, we would have to give him an extension. They're not correct. If they change titles, the deeds rather.
If the property has legally exchanged hands during this process, we weren't notified of that, that has taken place, then sit down with the legal department and decide how to proceed.
Now, this is just a guy that told me this, cause he and I rode by it yesterday on the way up to another house up there, and he said that guy had bought that house because he was sweeping it out or something, and this is just conjecture.
We received the same information. You did.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one additional follow-up on that is when the case is initiated, Brian files a notice with the probate court. So any purchaser who, you know, and by law, the seller is supposed to disclose to us that he is selling the property. But the thing is, is the purchaser of this property takes with notice because they're supposed to check title before they buy a property. And if they check title, they will see where this is under a nuisance abatement procedure. And as well as, you know, we had the owner here for a public hearing previously. So legally, we don't have to start the case over. But a lot of times, when there is a change of ownership, Brian will meet with the new owner and kinda get an assessment, is this new owner gonna take care of business, or is this a delay?
Yeah.
And so, Brian does a good job working with them. But from a legal standpoint, we, once with this process, we do not have to start over.
Thank you, Lee. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm gonna move to abate the nuisance.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, now if it come to light that he sold the property, I would want Brian to work with them because, so, we need all the houses we can have in our community, cause we've knocked a lot of them down, so I would hope the new owner would fix it up.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3609 Georgia Avenue in District 6, FNAMP LLC and Certain Rights of Redemption of the heirs of Shirley Thrasher and Varney Thrasher being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of this year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3610 Georgia Avenue in District 6, David W. Waits being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on recent improvements, I hope to be able to report to you next month this nuisance has been abated. I'm asking today for 30 days. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask for 30-day table.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item number 16 is a resolution awarding bid number 3320 for janitorial supplies. The purchasing department recommended awarding the bid to Etowah Chemical by utilizing local preference. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move for adoption.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And if there's anyone curious about it, I think there were eight bidders on this bid. Item number 17 is a resolution approving issuance of special event alcoholic beverage license. This is for DGI Downtown Gadsden Incorporated. This has applied for a license for the Sunset Sips event to be held at 90 Broad Street on October 18th of this year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move for adoption.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is a resolution approving issuance of special event alcoholic beverage license. The Bishop of Birmingham has applied for a license for the $10,000 giveaway event to be held at 344 South First Street on October 20th, 2016. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Not a discussion on this, but moving back up when Ms. Moore comes and talk or give her a report, maybe she can talk a little bit about Sunset Sips.
Okay.
But I move for adoption.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for recreational trails grant. This is a DECA. This is for construction of between six and seven miles of additional trails to the existing Black Creek Trail system. And a DECA grant in the amount of $100,000 is available with a match of $28,165 required from the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I would just like to say that encourage people to use this Black Creek Trail. We have a lot of trails up there, and we also have a certified trailblazer. That's Mr. Watley. So I just think that we ought to be able to use it. It's an access to the city, and I don't think a lot of people, even though we talk about it, I don't think a lot of people really, really know about the trails at Nakalula Falls. So go up there and introduce yourself to our trailblazer.
Two, we've had a lot of the bicycle and jogging people who continually work on it. You know, we got some money here a couple months ago from other clubs. I think it was the bicycling group, $7,500. But that's really getting to be a big deal, and if we can keep them doing a lot of the work and keep supporting it and getting grants like this, that can be where it draws a lot of people in here. They don't realize the scenic beauty of all that up there.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's worth noting, I actually walked the trails with Mr. Watley, with Ed, one weekend, and while we were there, we actually saw a gentleman who was a reporter for one of the statewide magazines that focuses on biking trails and walking trails. And he had a camera attached to his helmet and he was covering our trails. So there's a lot of attention that's been drawn to that trail system, so something we should be proud of for sure.
Okay. And I do wanna thank the Mayor's Office for fending for yourselves. We didn't get a whole lot of help with this grant proposal, I'm sure. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new businesses, is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards, okay?
Thank you, Council President, Council members. I am Kay Moore. I'm Director for Downtown Gadsden, and I think that my first thing is I wanna thank DJ Buster and Chef Curly for finishing up their Musical Mondays. If y'all didn't make that every Monday from June through September, you missed a very good time. So thank you, gentlemen, for what you've done on that. First Friday is this Friday, and people think that First Friday ends in October, but let me stress to you, tell all your friends and your neighbors, we go through December. Now, October is probably the largest we'll have, but we've got the tractors this First Friday, and they're gonna be between, in the 600 block, kinda between Compass Bank and the federal building there. You know, they line up and they come in, and then they'll be on their display, I think, the next weekend. But have the tractors, we'll have music. Andrea Davis will be at Third Street. Kings of Swing will be at Fourth and Broad in front of BB&amp;T, so they'll be there. They're always a big crowd favorite. Four in the Fire will be at Fifth Street, and then Carl Brady will be at Sixth Street in front of the Pittman Theater. And if you didn't notice, the vertical sign went back up at the Pittman Theater yesterday. Now we're working on getting the rest of it fixed, but we're gonna wait and just have a big, big to-do on October 25th for the Pittman, for the sign at the Pittman Theater. But we do go, First Friday goes through December. November, it'll be more of just a kind of a laid-back version, but we'll still have people, depending on the weather, what we'll try to do outside. If we can't do anything, we'll play our music from the speakers that we like so much. But then, December is our North Pole stroll. We'll encourage people to walk in their Christmas costumes down to the lawn of City Hall and light the Christmas tree in December. Then we'll have a concert at the Pittman after that. So First Friday does go through December. We take off January and February. That's the only months we don't really have it, so. I invite you to bring your friends. It's gonna be a fun time. The weather's finally gonna break for us a little bit. It's been a very, very hot summer, so please come out and see what's going on. And yes, Sunset Sips, thank you for passing that for us. We'll now finish out up with the ABC board. Sunset Sips is the largest fundraiser that we have with Downtown Gadsden. We close off the Memorial Bridge. You noticed that we used 90 Broad Street because that's basically the 911 address they've given us. But we close off the bridge on Tuesday, October 18th. We will close the bridge about 3 o'clock. The event itself is from 5 to 7, and last year we had the bridge back open again by a quarter to 8. And last year, we had the bridge back open again by a quarter to eight. But we have, Life of Alabama is our big sponsor this year. We also have, the Stone Market will be a sponsor, Back Forty Beer Company, Frios. It's a lot of fun. DJ Buster will be there playing his jazz. We lined speakers up the bridge. So you've got music on the bridge, and it's just a lot of fun. It's not an event where we encourage you to sit down, because we do have tables, so we have some B-store tables, there's some round tables with some chairs. But we encourage you to just kind of look over the Couso River. When do you get a chance to stand on that bridge without getting cars whizzing by you each way? So it is our biggest fundraiser, and we do appreciate that. Every year, we've spent the money on something back downtown that I don't have to come and ask you for. The speakers, the banners, and different things like that. We've not yet decided what we're going to spend it on this year, but I promise you, it will be something that'll be very, very good. So First Friday, this Friday, and then October eighteenth will be Sunset Sips. And then October twenty-ninth, we'll have our infamous Halloweeny Party as a fundraiser for the Humane Society. So that'll be the twenty-ninth. And then our last third Thursday of the year will be October twentieth. And that's going to be Kelly and John, and it's always a good group, too. So we try to do things, positive things, to bring people downtown, and that's what we want to do, because we want y'all to be proud of our downtown. We want other people to be proud of our downtown. So is my five minutes up, counselor? Oh, no, I'm done then. Does anybody, anyone have any questions at all? Thank you. I hope you'll come and buy your tickets. You can get tickets for Sunset Sips at the Downtown Gadsden office, at the Stone Market, or at Kings Olive.
Kelly, can you give the date again?
October eighteenth, Tuesday, October eighteenth. Thank you. Five o'clock. Thank you.
All right. We have a citizen's request today. It's Mr. Porch.
Morning.
Morning.
I have been volunteered, name Buster Porch, nine oh seven Maryland, three five nine oh three. And I have been volunteered to speak about sickle cell. I had two items, but I'll only speak about one because through the graciousness of Ms. Edwards, she's going to speak on the second one. So when I retired, I thought my desire was to sit back and do absolutely nothing. But it seemed like the more nothing that I want to do, I desire to do, the more I have to do. I guess that's why they called me volunteer. But I am, I like to show things when I speak. I learned this a long time ago when I was in politics up in Illinois. Because being from Alabama, someone told me I had a southern accent. So I said, I'm on a show from now on. But, so I prefer to show, and this is the sickle cell tag. I'll pass it on so you could, each one could see. Can't have it because that's Ms. Timmons' tag. But I love to, for your eyes, to see what my words are saying. That's why I like to pass it on. The Sickle Cell Foundation, that's a success story. When Sickle Cell Foundation thought of the idea of having a tag, they approached the state of Alabama, and Alabama said they must have one thousand guaranteed before they would okay it. They got the thousand. So I have a letter from Sharon Lewis. We did it. We made history. Alabama is the first state to approve a specially card tag for sickle cell agency. So on behalf of the families affected by sickle cell disease, the Board of Directors, the staff of the Central Alabama Sickle Cell Foundation would like to thank you for supporting our specially tagged project. The tag only costs an additional fifty dollars each year when you renew. I consider that as just a donation to the Sickle Cell Foundation. Because forty-five dollars out of the fifty goes back to the Sickle Cell Foundation. So I just wanted to, for everyone to see, and just what it feels like. And right now, it is easy to get, when it's time for you to renew, you go up to the county building and tell them, instead of the regular, you want a sickle cell tag, and they will process it. Initially, they had problems, but now no problem. Just say, I need it whenever it's time for you to renew your tag. If you want it, they'll process it there. So Ms. Edwards, your turn. So I've done my part. I'm glad you volunteered because I'm getting tired of being volunteered by myself.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Fay Edwards. I reside at eleven thirty-five Glendale Avenue in East Gaston. To Mayor Guyton, President Williams, and other members of the council, good morning again. I'm here as a representative of Team Gaston. We have, if you remember, last year Gaston hosted the Sickle Cell Walk-a-thon. And my other team members are Mr. Fred Zachary and Ms. Johnny Timmons. And I want to make sure that I thank the council and the city of Gaston this morning for your generous donations. Because of you, we reached our goal. In fact, we, I think, went over our goal. We set our goal as fifty thousand dollars. And I'm sure, I know for sure that we did go over that amount. So again, we appreciate your support in making that happen. Now, the Sickle Cell Walk-a-thon, or the East Alabama Sickle Cell, is made up of thirteen counties. So this year, we walk in Talladega, Alabama. And so we are hoping that you will be just as supportive for us this year as we take funds to represent Team Gaston in Talladega. And we're hoping that we continue to bring back the first-place trophy. We've been doing that for a while now. So I'm here asking for your support again. And also, if you wish, come down and walk with us. We will have onsite registration on the college campus of Talladega College. And the registration starts at eight AM. The walk starts at nine. So, and the registration fee is twenty-five dollars for adults and fifteen dollars for children under eighteen years of age. And that includes the T-shirt. This is our T-shirt from last year. And so I can't wait to get one for this year as well. We're collecting T-shirts. So I just want to mention just a little bit about sickle cell because some of you may not know exactly what sickle cell disease is. So sickle cell disease is an inherited disorder for which a universal cure has not yet been found. The disease is not contagious, and sickle cell disease affects people of many ethnic backgrounds, but disproportionately affects African Americans. So that's one reason why I'm so passionate about this journey that we're on to raise funds for this devastating disease. Because as a nurse, I've nursed several people who have had sickle cell disease, and it is a very, very painful disease. And these people need our support. People with sickle cell disease have abnormally shaped red blood cells instead of healthy round cells. So the shape of the cells makes it hard for them to pass through the blood vessels, and that's what causes them to have so much pain. When these abnormally shaped blood cells try to go through the blood vessels, it causes them a lot of pain. And they end up in what we call sickle cell crisis. So as a result, patients suffer from a variety of health problems. Some of the more serious complications are strokes, infections, anemia, organ damage, jaundice, leg ulcers, and complications during pregnancy and severe pain. So our local foundation is able to assist affected individuals when they need help. They need help with medicines and equipment. And all of these funds that are raised in the thirteen counties go to the foundation at UAB in Birmingham. So all the money is collected, collectively used through the foundation in Birmingham. And they use it for research. They also use it for outreach services to help our people. So again, I say thank you, council persons. I don't want to say me, and I leave Dr. Toles out. So thank you, and we ask for your support again this year as you've done in the past. And we invite you to join us for family fun, food, and entertainment while we raise funds for a worthy cause. And again, we'll be on the campus of the great Talladega College in Talladega, Alabama. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Thank you.
One further thing, just think, what would happen if she was prepared? She was unprepared today. One further thing, reference to the tag, you can have it personalized for the same charge, so you don't have it out. And I want to thank Councilman Toles, as she's honorary chairman this year. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say, I have one of those tags, and when I went to Washington DC two or three weeks ago, somebody asked me what was that tag, and I explained it to them, and they thought it was a great idea. So I see quite a few of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for the volunteer efforts that you devote towards this. We, Gaston, is definitely on the map because of all of the efforts that have been put into this foundation and this effort. So I'll share just a little bit of trivia, just to show you that this is not a socioeconomic disease. But it is a disease that disproportionately impacts the African-American community. There are a couple of professional athletes who are, who very recently have garnered some attention. Ryan Clark, who's a former member, defensive back for the Pittsburgh Steelers, actually suffered a severe setback after attempting to play a football game with sickle cell anemia in the high altitudes of Denver, Colorado. He actually tried to play a football game in those conditions, and the conditions of the high altitude caused the setback. And he actually missed multiple games after attempting to play that. It was also brought to light that current running back, Tevin Coleman, of the Atlanta Falcons, suffers from sickle cell anemia. And of course, is contemplating whether or not he's going to play this week because the Falcons play Denver. So it's a disease that touches us at all areas of our society. So again, it's something that definitely garners our attention and support. I do, again, want to extend the thanks to the mayor and council for historically being supporters of this program. And again, thank all of those in Gaston who have put us on the map. Gaston is definitely a strong proponent of this effort, so we thank you for that. And I noticed on the flyer that there's a walk and a ride. Is that accurate? Okay, okay, all right, good. All right, remarks from the mayor and council? Mayor?
I just want to say a few words about education. And I know I've said some of this before, but we have all the things you need at our schools and the high school, the Career Tech Building, and there's so many opportunities out there. You know, and the teachers and the counselors, they can't do it all. When kids get home, especially early ages, and I've said this before, my wife is a guidance counselor at Etowah County Alternative School. And if they get past the seven or eight years old and they can't read and understand what they read or do math, then they start going downhill. And they need to do a lot of homework and study when they get home. If you've seen the Ben Carson story, that's just the best thing I've seen about education early on. His mother couldn't read, but they didn't know it until they got to be teenagers, so every time they would bring their work to her, she would tell them, "Well, that doesn't quite look right. Go back and study that some more, or write a report on it," or whatever. And that's why all of her children are brilliant. So, you know, parents, get involved with your kids, and please help them do homework. I mean, that's just a big, big thing. And we've got four or five hundred jobs available right here with these auto suppliers, but we can't get people to work. A lot of them, even with the city, we hire them in the summer. They work a day or two. They don't even come back and get their check. So put the pressure on them. If they're sitting around the house, make them go to work. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Councilwoman Toles?
Come.
Councilman Echols? Councilman Worden?
No.
Councilman Billings?
Yes, I'd like to announce that on Monday, this coming Monday, from five to six, I'll have a community meeting at the library and invite everybody to come out. And also, I just talked to the engineer. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks, our Eleventh Street Bridge will be reopened. And I know the people in South Gaston will be glad that it's reopened so that we won't have to drive through their neighborhood. The bridge is finished, but there's a couple of few things that they have to do to make it get inspected, to be past the OK. But other than that, that's all.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ms. Edwards for bringing our attention. I did the sickle cell. I never knew really what it was out of the fact, people, but the pain and so on and so forth. I want to thank you for the explanation. Also, where the money goes. Nowadays, that's most important to me. If it gets to the point of the people, they can discover a way to get away with this or listen to pain, whatever. And I'm going to apologize to the council and to the mayor for my phone going off. But I'm going to tell y'all, this is a fact. I put it on vibrate. I put it on mute. But daddy, when this is FYI, when you touch the weather channel, that baby's coming on. So keep that in mind up there, I'm telling you. I was always in fear to walk in the middle of a funeral or something, but anyway, it's good. Yeah, boy. Port you just that close.
All right, thank you, Councilman Reed. I do have one announcement. The Marine Corps Reserves has asked us to announce the dates to apply for the Toys for Tots Drive for this year. And I do appreciate them for getting an early start on this. So the application dates for 2016 are October tenth through thirteenth, from nine AM to noon, October seventeenth through twentieth, from nine to noon, and from, on October fourteenth, three PM to six PM. And all of this activity takes place at the Catholic Center of Concern, which is on six twelve Chestnut Street. When you apply, the following items are required. The children must be living in the household. A photo ID of the parent or guardian is necessary. Social security cards for all in the household, proof of income, and a current bill with correct address. Okay, so all of those items are required if you're applying. You're not eligible if you've signed up at another agency. So again, this, it's a shame, but you really have to police it to make sure that people aren't abusing the privilege. And applications will be taken on a first-come, first-served basis until the actual quota is reached. Okay? And as I'm reading this, I see that there are other application dates. There's also an application date, and there's a set of application dates in November. November first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth. And the windows, the time windows for those dates are nine AM to noon and one PM to three PM. There's also an option of applying online for those of us that are... There's also an option of applying online for those of us that are not technology, technologically challenged. You can go to www.toyefortots.org and complete the online application there. I also do want to take the opportunity to remind everybody that October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So we want to encourage everyone to please attend every event, wear as much pink as you've got. Some of us have more pink in our closet than others. But wear as much pink as you have, and be sure, be sure to support all of these events, because it's important that we continue to raise awareness regarding breast cancer. Is there anything else?
I want to know about the pink clothes in Billy's fly. You brought it up. I didn't.
I didn't say a word. I just looked that way.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.